They want to be on time and we're already a minute late. I hear ya. Yeah, yeah, I hear ya.
Hey Vice Mayor.
How are you sir?
Great, how are you doing?
I'm doing, I'm doing. I'm filling in, I'm gonna ask you guys for a motion to excuse the mayor as soon as we do a roll call. Alright. Good to go, okay. We on? Get us turned on, okay. If you guys have a seat, we'll get this meeting rocking and rolling. Awesome. If you do a roll call.
Excuse me. Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Fiskelli? Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Present. Can we stand for the pledge? Uh, the Troop 160 is gonna lead us tonight, so if you'll stand up and they're gonna do the honors tonight for us. Boy's got Troop 160.
Turn your head.
Are there any public comment cards? So far, we don't have any.
Thank you.
You got one.
What?
You got one, Thomas. Nice try.
Alright, there was gonna be a present, a presentation for Winnita Romance, but that's been moved to the next meeting. I need a motion to excuse the mayor.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mayor Nelson tonight.
Second?
Just Vice Mayor counsel, for the record, Mayor Nelson wanted me to report that a family member of his has a procedure at North Broward Hospital. He's with him, he got taken in very late, everything's okay, but he wanted to be with him when he woke up. So, he asked to be excused and appreciated you doing so.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
No, no, just the motion for excusing of the Vice Mayor, of Mayor Nelson.
Excusing Mayor.
Yes.
Councilmember Fiskelli? Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Okay, public comment?
Vice Mayor, we have one speaker tonight, Newell Hollingsworth, who wants to speak about trash in the median. Is there another one?
I'll take three minutes, Vinny, so take your time. Uh, Newell Hollingsworth, 199th Avenue. Trash again. Said March 4th, everything would get better, it didn't. While a greasy wheel gets the grease on bulk. The engine was running at about 6:30 in the morning up on Griffin Road and 199th Avenue. And at exactly 7:01, they started picking up bulk on 199th Avenue. Needless to say, there was a lot. But, garbage didn't get picked up till 5:00, and recyclables didn't get picked up at all. So, we got two out of three, which is what we've got all the way since Thanksgiving. Only this time, we get the bulk picked up, we get the garbage picked up, but the recyclers didn't get picked up. Now, yesterday, garbage and recyclers were picked up after the sunset on 199th. And they still had the 205, 210 area to go. I do not know if those areas got picked up at all. But I do know it was after the sunset when they picked up mine, and they made a left turn to go to 205. So, that is, that is still the same problem. And I think that the fines and penalties that should be in, put into place, should be put into place. Whatever they are, and if they're not in there, then someone didn't write the contract right. Now, let's talk about another issue. Equality among the east side of town and the west side of town, as far as the Prestige mowing contract in the median. I tried last year to go through the administration on this and was told that the contract is being run adequately according to the experts. Well, it's not. If a branch falls east of I-75 on Griffin Road in the median, Prestige in the morning will come by and pick up the branch. Because it's not there later in the afternoon, I've seen them picking up branches when they haven't been mowing. On the west side of town, we had a tree, a sable palm that fell over when Luke's was there. It was not cleaned up by Prestige during their regular, their cleanup that they charged us for, until we had the tree cutting expedition that we paid them extra for, that sat in the median so long, it rotted. There was a pile of brush that sits in front of the church at 184th and 186th. May I continue?
Go ahead.
Pile of brush that was put there by Prestige right when they started during the cleanup. That pile of brush is still there. Only it's turning into mulch now, it has been there so long. I've watched it collapse slowly, right on down. The individuals that live on facing Griffin Road, other property butts up to Griffin Road, and Deems Ranches, and Rolling Oaks, they deserve the same quality of trimming and care of the foliage that's on the south side of the road as those in the Sunshine Ranches area get. It is overgrown behind the berm, all the way down the way. I mentioned to the administration last year, there's a whole acre plot, right there at 172nd, that wasn't mowed the entire time Prestige had been there. And it was about six foot high. Well, they're mowing it, but they've never trimmed the trees or the bishafi and stuff that has grown up in there, and we had the tree trimming we paid for. That is still a mess right there at 172nd. And Prestige isn't doing an adequate job on that.
Let's wrap it up.
We would like, I would like, for the same amount of service given to the section of town between I-75 and Flamengo Road to be given to I-75 and 186th. That's where the problem lies. A branch can fall in the median, it'll stay there for weeks and weeks and weeks, though weed rack around it instead of picking it up. But on the east side of town, it gets picked up. That is a problem, and I'm told that is an adequate service according to their contract.
That's enough.
Thank you.
This mic doesn't work too good, these volumes on our mics aren't as good as they were. Is that better? No? Is it? Okay. Any other speakers?
Vice Mayor, no other public comment, we're on item five.
Okay. Board reports. Do we have any board reports?
Yeah, Newell Hollingsworth Complant. I'd like to thank Mr. Fiskelli for his efforts in bringing to fruition one of the items of the competency plan, which is the Tulaneing of 184th Avenue in the Future Plan. That is one of the goals that we had set in the EAR five years ago. And it has come to fruition due to his efforts. And I'd like to thank him very much for that.
Aster, go ahead.
Yes, Astronite 5480, southwest 170th Avenue. Just a little thing on the chili cook-off we had last Saturday, fundraiser for the Astronite Parks Foundation. It was fun. We had three new, at least two new people winning first and second place. And illustrious councilmember Jablonski came in third. So, it was fun, it was great, and we earned, I think, a little over $3,000 income. So, that wasn't too bad. Before you, you have the income statement for the foundation for last year. We netted a little over $16,000 during the year, and so it wasn't a bad year. I just have to read something here too that I got from one of our residents. Let me just put this on. Yes, this came in from Mary Coulson, who lives in Sunshine Ranches. And she wrote it to me, would actually have come to the town and to December more than anybody else. But she says, "Dear Aster, it is some considerable time since I saw you last, but wanted to let you know how much your work and those of your associates is appreciated. From my address, you will see that we live just west of Treyside Park. We were heavily involved, along with our neighbors, in the initial idea of a passive park when the developer of the commercial property started negotiations with our town in 2004. Tony and I took a walk yesterday around the park, and it was such a pleasure. There were newly installed infostations on the wildlife lands one could see. A new, very substantial bench replaced the one that had deteriorated and sited beneath trees for shade. But the absolute best part was that as we walked on the west side, we disturbed a beautiful fox. It ran off for a ways, then stopped to look back at us. The last time I saw a fox was in my pasture about 15 years ago. Treyside Park has been developed into a wonderful oasis buffer. Thank you so much, thank the town so much for doing that." Thank you.
Thanks, Aster. Okay. Know any other board reports? Okay. A councilmember, comments?
I'll lead off.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just to be brief, just a couple of things. First off, I'd like to thank the scouts from Troop 160 for being here tonight and leading us in the pledge. You guys did a great job, and I want to thank you for that. Just a couple of public service announcements. This coming Saturday, March 12th, out at Treetops Park, if you guys don't know where that is, that's 100th and Griffin on the north side, is Water Matters Day, and our very own December will be leading the charge. We are so well represented there that we see, I think, as the prototype for all future booths and exhibitions, pretty much in Broward County. It's pretty unbelievable. You go there, it's just the price of the admission to get into the park. There's like 20, 30 booths set up by various municipalities. It's the whole county that functions. You can stop by and get a free tree, one per family, as I understand it.
I think you can get two. I think you can get two free trees.
Two, alright, two. Sorry. And, and they're really good trees, I have actually five or six of them growing, none of them have ever died. It's amazing considering in my yard throughout the years. And, but you learn a lot. The University of Florida is there. Broward College is there, I believe. And South Florida Water Management and South Broward is there also. And you really, you get a lot of interesting things, and there's a lot of people there, and there's food trucks and whatnot. And you have, it's a great day for a family. And, but you really get to see what, how lucky we are to have the staff we do with December as our Parks Director, and takes care of this every year. This is what, like 10 years running at least, so it's unbelievable. The other thing I want to mention is March 20th, we have a egg hunt at Rolling Oaks Park. It starts at 12 o'clock, there's flyers in the back if you want to pick it up. It is sponsored by all the HOAs, I believe. There's actually a brunch, and it's pretty good. It starts at 11:00, and usually there's pancakes or something going on there. I haven't looked out on my patio and in my freezers and refrigerators to figure out what it is for my wife, so. But it's usually pretty good stuff. They take several trips to Sam's Club and Costco, so. Basically, that's all I have, Vice Mayor.
Steve? Great, thank you. I need to echo the Water Matters, I just think that's one of the great events of our community and all the work that December and the other volunteers that help her out do there. I saw her, when you said 10 years, I saw her kind of voice 14 years she's been doing that. So, that's, that's really amazing, it's fantastic. Yeah, it's fantastic. I can speak from my own personal experience that the first year we went to it, I really don't know how many years ago it was, probably about 14 years ago, yeah, yeah. We got these two scrawny little cypress trees that, you know, kind of like the train, I think I can, I think I can grow. And I can tell you that those trees are about that wide around now. They're just, they're magnificent trees, kind of the highlight of our backyard. And, and that's where they, that's where they originated from. And we got a bunch of other trees that go with them, but those are my favorites, they were the first year, and they just look magnificent. So, I would just encourage everybody to go out to that, it's a, it's a great event and a real good community event. The other thing I wanted to mention was just an update that the work now on the guardrails out west of Bonaventure on Griffin Road is now underway. They're preparing the, the landscape to do the work, so it's great to see that's underway. It's scheduled to be completed in, in early June, June 6th or 7th, something like that, which is almost to the day, the day that we formally requested that Broward County assist us in that. So, kudos to Broward County for being so, you know, receptive to our request and so quick to action. And it's really, it's really appreciated the, what they've done for us, so it's good to see that underway.
Awesome. You know, you don't have a chance to fill in your backyard with those cypress trees that big in there now.
Yeah, I know.
Okay. Just, just a reminder. Freddie? Talk into the mic a little more, can't hear you.
Oh, no? Okay.
Yep.
That pole on Griffin Road and 188th Avenue, you know, we put it there because that's where that, it jogs, right? It's, it's not reflecting. I don't know what we need to do, we put some new tape on it or something? But we've got a pole right there where, so the people don't hit that curb as you're coming, going east, right there? And it's, it needs some...
Where it goes from single road to a split lane.
Right there at 188th Avenue, that's where the road kind of swings to a, to a four lane. And we, we had a problem with people hitting that curb, so we sat, we put a pole there. But I noticed the other night when I was coming back, it's not reflecting. So, I don't know what they're using, but they do make some tape, because I use a lot on my fences, that holds up pretty good.
We should have it on that curb also, reflective paint or something, on the curb itself.
Paint don't hold up as well as, you can get that stuff that sticks on.
Sure.
And even, you know, can even, even if you had to screw in there, it'll last for a long time. I think we need, need to look at and do something with it.
You got that, Andy?
Also, today was MPO Day, and Russell was there with me today. One of the biggest things now, people, is this one sense taxes is coming up. It was a big thing today at the meeting, again, took up most of the meeting. How they're gonna do it, how they're gonna sell it to the people. The main thing is, they're gonna try to come out and show the people where the money's going, so it'll pass. Because if they don't, it's not gonna pass, but it's, but it's, it's coming. They're gonna do everything they can to try to press it. And it'll be split between each community, they'll get a share of it, but it's coming. That's all I got.
Okay. I've got a couple of things. The people that we have a contract with CAPS, who handles our development, construction, permitting process, and does the inspections and whatnot, the RS means is the format that they get their numbers from for construction. And apparently, in the near recent future, that number of RS means has gone up more than double what the price is. So, what used to, we used to pay $6,000 or $7,000 for is like now $11,000. So, if you want to build a house in town, say 3,000 square feet, the fee is like $11,000 to CAPS. So, I think that we should ask Andy to get ahold of them and let's have a meeting and see what the fees are and stuff, because that, that kind of pricing is like outrageous. So, I want to know if you guys are on board with getting that done sooner than later, because I know we've talked about addressing some stuff, but I think we need to get on it. So, are you guys on board with that? Oh, yeah, workshop, whatever, let Andy get a workshop together, a meeting together, whatever we gotta do. But I think we need to address this stuff sooner than later. Jump in and speak if you want.
I mean, I wasn't, I wasn't prepared to speak on it, but I do think that that's an issue that we're hearing more and more about, that it's, it's expensive, and it, we need to either understand why it's expensive and whether it's realistic or not. I do think there's a couple elements where we are gonna be a little bit more expensive than some of our neighbors, because we're full cost recovery. And, you know, I, for one, I'm committed to that, I think that's the right way to do it. But on the other hand, I think there, you know, you bring up some good points, that there may be some artificial reasons and some unreasonable reasons why it is higher, which we can maybe address and, and resolve.
Well, one of the things I was told six months or a year ago was that if somebody comes, you gotta pay that fee upfront, but if you bring in your receipts and whatnot of what it costs you to build, and you're building your own house, and it all totals up and it's less money, that they'll reimburse you. But I've never seen or heard of that done, and I don't even know that they do it, because I'm confident that's not in our contract anywhere to do that.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Put in my two sons' word.
Sure.
I'd like to see a workshop on it first, because I'm a little hazy on the details. I mean, it has been a while since we've covered them. And I really think if we had some, not even necessarily real world examples, but examples made of the most popular permits and the whole process, step one, step two, step three, I think we'd get a better understanding of how, how this is, and then can make some, you know, judgments or, you know, figure out if we want to do anything or not do anything at all. You know, it may be okay for all we know, we just don't know, I don't know.
Yeah. I've been a little more on top of it, so I'm just a little more aware of it, but I think when you guys see it and see the numbers, you'll be absolutely bamboozled. So, anyhow, so Andy, if you could jump on that, it would be greatly appreciated.
I'd like to...
Freddie, go ahead.
I'd like to see a comparison made. Andy, as a councilman, chance we can do that? Compare what we're charging, what other cities are charging.
Comparison between Davie or whoever else, maybe?
It's very, very difficult, because the model for here for Southwest Ranches has been cost recovery. Now, we don't want to go beyond cost, and I, and I respect that concern, but the model is based on cost recovery. In, in many other municipalities that have their own building department, a lot of those surfaces are offset and, and underwritten partially out of their, their budget. And so, the actual permit cost isn't a reflection of what the cost is. So, I, I mean, we can give you some numbers from a comparison standpoint, but it's not gonna be an accurate apples to apples comparison.
I can add one more thing from a legal standpoint. What, what the better comparison is, is CAP doesn't just do Southwest Ranches. So, the better comparison is to take every contract that CAP has and to show you what they charge all the other cities, because you'll be surprised to see that every city does charge differently. So, that's probably the better comparison.
Yeah, and that's, that's kind of where I was going. I think the, the town portion of all the cost recovery is not...
Too crazy.
Yeah, it's, it's reasonable, it's good.
There's some adjustments.
But there's some other things like CAPS cost, I think there's other things like how often we require engineering and, and surveys. There's, you know, a variety of other things that are kind of piling on to full cost recovery, and they're being kind of covered and forgiven based on full cost recovery, you know? So, I think if we can identify all those other things to look at, I think then maybe we'll, you know, we'll understand really where we are. I don't think that it's, you know, like to your point, I don't think it's, you can just throw out numbers, this is what we charge versus the other town versus the other... It's, it's, I mean, that, it'll, not that it's bad information, but I think it's only giving you a very small picture of what the real issue might be.
Yeah, ours is laid out a little bit differently anyway. So, some of it's internal that we gotta tweak or modify, but the numbers I'm talking about related to CAP are like, you're gonna be blown away when you see what these numbers are. Okay. Any other issues with that, or anybody else want to add to there? We're good. Alright, well, we'll move on. Administration, legal comments?
Just real briefly, next week, we have two, two places to go. Some of us are going for the oral argument to watch CCA against Pembroke Pines in Palm Beach. At the Fort DCA, it's open to the public. The Fort DCA has called up the item to be heard by oral argument. The hearing is on Tuesday at 9:30-ish at the courthouse at 1525 Palm Beach Lakes Boulevard. For anyone who wants to watch it, we'll be there watching it as well. And then, the next day, on the 16th, we will be at an attendance at mediation between Clark and Vardeman as it relates to the closure of 54th Place, and how that impacted their properties. Because of the fact that we are named in the complaint as well, we need to participate in their mediation. So, I believe Andy and I are going to that one. So, we'll let you know after both those events what transpired, and those are, that's what's happening next week.
Okay. Administrative, Andy?
Yeah, thank you, Vice Mayor. A couple introductions I want to make. As you all know, with the passing of Davie Fire Rescue Chief Joe Monapoli, Mike Malvasio is the Assistant Chief, is acting as chief in, certainly in his absence. The other Assistant Davie Fire Chief Julie Downey is with us this evening with the reassignment of some responsibilities within Davie Fire. We now fall under Julie's watch, and so we welcome her here to Southwest Ranches. We've worked with her on some other things, emergency management and otherwise. She's been great for us to work with, so we certainly welcome her here tonight. And the other is sitting with her is Sergeant Pablo Castanada. If you recall, last, at the last meeting, I had shared with you some FDLA statistics, and there were some questions on the larceny numbers and some other things. So, the sergeant's here, I'd like to ask him if it's alright with you, Vice Mayor, for him to come forward.
Absolutely, come on up.
He could talk to that a little bit.
You can slide that back over in the middle if you would.
Good evening, gentlemen. With respect to the larcenies, we saw an increase from 2014 to 2015. And what we've noticed is that these are based on crimes of opportunity. They're specifically vehicle borne, which means thieves are coming and going into vehicles, or they're stealing parts from vehicles, or in some cases, they're actual vehicle thefts. Now, vehicle thefts, their owner are difficult to take care of. That's more, what we recommend for citizens to do is, as far as the vehicle thefts themselves, make sure that the front of their residences, wherever they park their residences, are lit, well lit. If they do have camera systems, make sure those camera systems are operational. The much easier aspect to take care of is the larceny of items from within the vehicle or the vehicle parts. What we found as a pattern is, a lot of people have been told just word of mouth, keep your vehicles unlocked. That way they don't smash the window and get inside. And it's sound, because you don't want the vehicle to get damaged. However, anything inside the vehicle, they rummage, they take coins, they take any items we leave inside. So we asked the citizens, please lock the vehicles. These are crimes of opportunity. The burglars are not going to go to the vehicles and smash things in front of a residence. They don't want that kind of attention. They're going to go, they try the door. If it's unlocked, they'll go inside and take what they want. So we're urging the residents, please lock your vehicles, make sure they are locked. Don't leave anything inside, briefcases, gym bags, because we may know that there's gym material in there, but obviously the burglars don't. So anything that they want to leave in there, store it in the trunk, is what we're recommending to the citizens. So although we saw the 26% increase from 2014 to 2015, we're confident that with these measures in place, and if the residents start taking these actions, that we'll see a decrease in that. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Sergeant. That's all I have, Vice Mayor.
Okay. Russell, if you'll read Resolution 9, and I'll pass it over to Steve.
Okay, thank you.
This is a resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, recognizing the plight of Robert Levinson and demanding his swift and safe return to his family, providing for effective date.
Thank you. You know, we get kind of a steady stream into the town of resolutions that are passed by other communities. And sometimes, you know, sometimes we adopt them, they make sense, and we adopt them. Sometimes we don't, they don't really apply to us. This one doesn't really directly apply to us, but when I read it, I really felt it was important for us to adopt it and to move forward with it. I don't know how many of you are familiar with this story, but Robert Levinson, he was with the FBI for over 20 years, he was with the DEA. And he disappeared right out, was really, I think, on one of the islands off of Iran, if I remember properly. And he's been gone since 2007. You may be aware that with the Iranian deal and all that, a number of hostages were released. He was not. So he's still there. And I feel, he also, him and his family are South Florida residents. They lived in Coral Springs for the majority of the time, that they were raising their family. So he's kind of of a local. And I just don't want him forgotten, you know? He's an American citizen that's being held in a hostile environment. And he deserves everything that we can do to work for his freedom and get him home. Yeah. So that's why I brought this one forward, and I appreciate everybody's support on it.
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second. Sorry. Call it?
Councilmember Jablonsky?
You want public, anybody want public comment on this item? No, go ahead.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, number 10, let's see. Marty? Budget calendar.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Martin Sherwood, Town Financial Administrator. We have our item number 10, board discussion for our proposed fiscal year 1617 budget calendar. Staff has had their kickoff. We're in preliminary motion right now, working hard. Right now, this is our fifth, I'm proud to report, this is our fifth, under Town Administrator Burns and myself's administration. And the exhibit is color coordinated. I'll go into the portion of the color coordinated that reflects and directly impacts you all is the yellow portion. Tonight, starting from the top, you'll see Tuesday, March 10th. That is our proposed calendar for tonight's meeting that we looked to council for adoption. It will provide us through tomorrow, all the way through May 6th, giving us plenty of time to meet with you, each of you individually, at a time to be determined in the future. The pink, that's mainly directed to staff, they're all working on their descriptions, department goals, our capital improvement projects. The next yellow item is basically the anticipated preliminary millage rate, initial adoption, fire protection, and solid waste specialist assessment adoption at our July regular council meeting of Thursday, July 28th. We have, continuing in the yellow areas, we have a annual budget workshop where community is invited. More input time available to us towards the end of August. That's Tuesday, August 23rd. And then we, in September, we have to set our dates, because Town Clerk had an original proposal for the dates. We did have a conflict. The reason for the late approval this time is because the school board had a conflict with Broward County Commission. They had to fight it out. And the school board has first preference. So we are proposing that the first hearing take place on Wednesday, September 14th, 2016. And in conjunction with our previous meetings and hearings, the public hearing, the first public hearing would take place at 6:00 PM. And then right afterwards, at 7:30, we anticipate, would be the regular council meeting. So we get to kill two birds at one stone on the same day of Wednesday, September 14th. Our only other alternative, because I know there's been discussion on that in the past, to facilitate the trim process and save us money, is the Monday, September 12th. In lieu of Monday, September 12th, we've chosen Wednesday, September 14th for your selection. But that's subject to your adoption tonight. And then our second and final hearing for the millage and the budget adoption, will give us plenty of time for our advertising, as well as getting the final numbers based on the initial adoption, is the Thursday, September 29th, 2016. So with that background in mind, I know you're all familiar with the schedule. You've seen this in past years. I'll turn the floor back to the Vice Mayor to discuss.
Okay. Go ahead, Steve.
I would like to formally thank Broward County for having their meeting on my birthday this year, because this will be the first time in about five or six years we haven't had a meeting on my birthday. So my appreciation there. At first, I thought it was a typo when I didn't see a meeting on my birthday, but then I saw Broward County had scheduled a meeting. So no, I'm good.
Awesome. Everybody else good with dates? Any changes or adjustments? We're good?
No, it looks great, Vice Mayor. You know, I just want to make a comment once again. Marty, you're kind of spoiling us. Everything's laid out in a very concise and precise professional manner. And it's a little scary, like several years in a row.
Well, I guess the only question I have, is this calendar and date stuff going to be up on the website?
Yes. Once you officially approve, we'll be able to post it on the website. We'll post it on the bulletin board. We'll distribute to all staff as necessary.
All right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the question.
Any public comment?
I don't think on the calendar.
How about input?
Input on the calendar? Go ahead.
New Orleansworth, 199th Avenue. The calendar itself is fine. It's the documents that go with the budget. Again, this year, as I did last year, all of the infrastructure projects, last year, they were basically lumped into one spot, and it got dollar amount. Therefore, when the council approved the infrastructure portion of the budget as part of the budget, they didn't know they were going to have $130,000 in cost overruns that were already built into it, because they approved those projects. What I'd like to see is additional documents, one for the drainage, which is if you put the $100,000 back in, exactly what is going to be done, where it's going to be done, and the cost of each one of those projects, up to $100,000, or any cost overruns, so it can be approved in the budget at that point. The same thing with the regular infrastructure. Tisdor, which has a cost overrun this year of $60,000, that you didn't know was going to hit you, but it did. And it has to be put back in. And I'd like to know how that's going to be funded. Whether you're going to raise taxes to put the money back into the $200,000 that is required to be there for year 20 or 25, depending on what you look at, and how that's going to be funded this year, or whether you're going to kick the can down the road. And all the other infrastructure projects that are there, the exact numbers that are budgeted, and so that the engineering staff can stay within the budget. That is what we had. Last year, we had a lump sum, and we got blindsided. The residents got blindsided, the drainage board got blindsided. And we really know on TV, you guys got blindsided. So let's get some documentation as to what is going to be in there, and give direction to Marty to have it. Thank you.
Anybody else? Russell, you want to call it?
Doug...
Hold on, Freddie's got a question.
Question that came up at the MPO meeting today, got me thinking on something. On this one cent sale taxes, big part of us going toward transportation. And it comes in there, local roads. What happens? We're paying right now, with our own people are paying for that work. Can we recuperate some of that money that we've already put on our people? If we get that money, then we're going to get some of it back. How's that going to be handled?
You want to take that on, Andy?
Yeah. If that item gets on the ballot for this November and it passes, depending on what's hammered out between the MPO and the county, there may be a percentage of that that would come back to the town for infrastructure. At that point, it would be up to the council to determine where you'd want to spend that. That's not going to be in place for the fiscal year that we're going to start working on now, which will be fiscal year 17 is the calendar that Marty's working on. Assuming that this gets approved in November, it will not be in place during that fiscal year. It would, at the soonest, be the year after that. But that revenue would then, we would come back to council with projections, that here's what we anticipate getting, and you'd be able to allocate that. If you wanted to allocate that perhaps towards Tisdor and lower the millage on that, that would be up to the council. That's a policy decision at that time.
Okay, you good? Want to call the question?
Councilmember Jablonsky? Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Approval of the minutes for February 25th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Audience, you have any corrections for us? You do once in a while. Okay, seeing no one? Call the question.
Councilmember Jablonsky?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Awesome. All yours. Anybody want to handle the next thing? It's adjournment.
We're going to let you run the meeting from now on.
Well, you're at the end. You're going to adjourn this meeting, or what?
Do we have a motion to adjourn?
I, so moved.
Okay. I guess they wanted to stay long.
It's a pleasure.
Always.
Do you want a copy of that contract, please, Lee? Yeah?